Good evening and welcome to the December 7, 2022 regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd, Freeman, Peters, Corbin, Coronado?
Here.
Arnsors?
Here.
Hookstra?
Here.
Raymond? Mayor Box?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you Kathy. We're going to start this evening as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer. Councilmember Byrd is scheduled to do the prayer this evening, but he's unable to be with us, so I will take that responsibility and honor this evening. And then we'll be immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us if you are so inclined. Please join me in prayer if you're so inclined. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's a responsibility. It's an honor. It's a privilege to serve. Our job is to listen, to think, to discern, to discuss, and to make the best decisions that we can for the people of this great community. Lord, thank you for this holiday season. Thank you for the joy, for the lights, for the opportunity to get together with family and with friends, and to celebrate with one another. Lord, keep that joy in our hearts, in our minds, and in our words as we work to do the people's work guided by you. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first items on our agenda this evening are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine, and they have been previously reviewed by council members as part of our council packet. And they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of city council or a member of the public asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. And I will be asking for that in a moment. But prior to doing that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
For A, absence excused. For B, approval of minutes, November 16, 2022, regular meeting. For C, oath of office. For D, appointment of special counsel to assist with assessing and filing for certain clean energy tax credits available to HBPW under the Inflation Reduction Act. For E, Invenergy Solar amended and restated letter of authorization. For F, claims filed against the city. For G, adopt resolution, Holland Museum Special Liquor License. For H, award bid, master plan update. For I, Department of Natural Resources Spark Grant Application. For J, tax abatement. Set public hearing for PA 198 tax abatement for LG Energy Solutions, Michigan, for property located at 875 East 48th Street. 4K, South Shore Village Business Improvement District Board of Directors reappointment.
Thank you Kathy. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none, is there any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra? Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for the public to be able to speak to council at all of our, both regular and our study session meetings. We limit comment to five minutes per person. There are three lights on the dais in front of it, in front of me. One is green, that means you're doing well in time. The yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired. This is one-way communication. It gives you the opportunity to speak to council, but we don't engage in discussion at this time, nor do we answer questions. And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and the municipality in which you reside. Is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson, Zeeland, Michigan. Good evening, council, city lawyer, city manager, assistant manager, and clerk. What I say is done respectfully. We are for our constitutional religious rights and freedoms of speech. As time goes on, we see more and more why we must continue to speak. We are here to educate you and the public. We are not here to waste your time or impede your government. November 16, I thank Mayor Box for agreeing to support declaring April as Faith Month. I asked him to be fair and declare the whole proclamation set forth by the concerned women of America. The mayor and staff proposed they would prepare the proclamation down, pair the proclamation down to Holland's specific language that concerns us. Your Holland anti-discrimination ordinance was not authored by Holland's citizens' specific language. Rather, this ordinance was authored by the Anti-Discrimination Commission, the Michigan Attorney General, four and two, the Holland City Manager and City Lawyer. That is what the council adopted, not the language of the people who live here. It was forced upon the citizens. That concerns us. November 16, did you really listen to Dr. Estelle and Dr. Baylor's research explaining that the state of Michigan falls way short in laws, short in laws that protect religious freedoms, as in the Michigan Attorney General? That concerns us. Case in point, November 23. Are you aware of the threatening misled protest and ugly Facebook protest posts about a duly-elected Michigan congressperson and the religious bookstore in Holland the Wednesday before Thanksgiving? Yes, right on 9th Street, 4 to 7 o'clock. And it was only eight people. But how do you think the employees felt reading those emails? This was done by a person who took the liberty to act upon your 2020 ordinance that he repeatedly strongly supports. Now for November 16 council meeting. Before public comment, Mayor Box explains that the council will not respond to any of the comments. On November 16, I left early with the group. I received this email November 17 from someone who stayed until the meeting concluded. An employee of the city approached the author of the email, in other words, it was not on camera, and said the following. "The view of the majority of the council members is as firm as ever that there is simply not an issue that the public comment speakers do not understand the ordinance as written, in other words ignorant, that the protection is already included. They, the council, are increasingly frustrated and annoyed by the time being taken up during council sessions. They view most of the comments during sessions as irrelevant to the function of the council within government. May I remind you of the hours in 2020? The council and the public sat and listened to the LGBT community in public comment as they discussed their feelings of not being affirmed in Holland. I was there, and I saw the respect you gave them. We expect the same. Public comment is from the heart of the public. You are here to listen and to respect, not curtail. I am hoping this issue I mentioned of frustration and annoyance of this council would be addressed internally between the employee and this council." People sit here from the council, and they watch you. They lock, they watch your responses. And when you're approached afterwards and told that you're irrelevant, and you're disrespected, and they really feel that you're a waste of their time, I don't believe that's who you are.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, special order of the day, public hearings. Disposition of surplus property, 345 Collin Park Drive. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you Mayor and council. Just a little context on this before I hand it off to Matt to answer any further questions. Going back many years now, the city appointed a committee that went through processes that had residents, and then it definitely involved staff and council members, where we had a property review committee that took a look at all the properties that were owned by the city and went through and categorized those different properties in different, in different groupings, categories. And one of the particular categories was a catalyst property. And really, the thought with those catalyst properties is it was property that was owned by the city that rather than maybe being just a small sliver of land here or there, that it could be something to support maybe a larger goal or priority not only of council, but also of the community. And associated with that report and those catalyst properties was a recommendation that if we get to the point where we would potentially take a look at not only having council take action as we're recommending tonight that it's a surplus property, but also to have a particular process that we would use to dispose of those properties. The one that we're talking about tonight is depicted on the screen in front of you, and it may be a little bit hard to see, but it's not multiple properties. It's all one parcel. So it is really, it's one property that, that's being considered and presenting to you. And another important background piece of information is I think you will all recall that this parcel was referenced, and then we had a discussion about it recently also when we did the South Shore Village visioning plan. So I think this has been on your radar for a period of time, and I thought just good for you and the viewing public to hear the background on this, that a lot of work has gone into recognizing this as an opportunity. And I'm going to hand it off to Matt now, who is our disposal of surplus, surplus property guru at this point. He's, he's been doing a lot of it, and Matt can give you a few more pieces of information, and then what the next steps would be on this particular parcel.
Yeah, I think you didn't leave me a whole lot of meat left on the bone on this one. You covered most of it, but you're right. This was identified as a catalyst property. It's been identified in the South Shore Village Master Plan as an opportunity for something a little bit bigger than what it is now to happen there. The RFP process is a similar process to what we did at 36th Street that allows the city council to, to evaluate things beyond just price. A lot of times we'll come to you and say, this is a surplus piece of property. We're going to talk about another one that's going to get hopefully rezoned this evening, parcel K, where it was simply market it, bring us back to the best price, and go from there. The RFP process that we'll go through here will allow us to evaluate price, obviously, because that's very important, but also impact on the community, impact on what the potential project could be. So it gives us a little more, a little more leeway on what we can evaluate and come back and make a recommendation to you on a project. So it's identified, it's not in the parks plan. We can simply declare it a surplus this evening if you so choose, and then we would go through an RFP process and come back to you at a later date, perhaps even in a study session, depending on what came back before taking final action.
Great, thanks. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, do, do we know what it was initially planned for? Like, why do we have this interestingly shaped property?
So if you remember, I believe it was about 22, 23 years ago when Collin Park Drive was redone, this is kind of the remnants of a bigger piece. If you look at the roadway, it really is a funky shaped parcel, right? That is because the roadway reconfiguration in the park, in the parking lot, left this kind of odd remainder parcel. So that's what it, that's why it's there and what it is.
Okay. And is the, the area to the south, was that the old sugar beet factory area? I mean, there used to be a...
Yes, I know there was a sugar beet factory in, in this general area. Exactly where it was is probably 75 years before my time here. So I'm, I'm not comfortable pinpointing that exact location.
All right. And this is resident, residential?
So, yep, so the, that, the report, I actually, I have the whole report here. I live with this report because there's still a lot of properties out there. But it identifies that as potentially being residential property.
Specifically, I'm going to follow up on that. It's zoned specifically, Mark, it's a... So it's the residential mixed use. So it's not just residential, but it really allows for a kind of a mixture of use. It's really aligned perfectly with what we talked about in that South Shore Village plan.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council for staff? Yeah, Scott?
So, Mark, maybe you can help with this a little bit from, from a planning perspective. There's a road there. There's a road there that goes through that property, correct? And it deadens into a sidewalk?
Yeah, so that is 14th Street there.
So are we going to talk about connectivity when this property's developed? Or how, how is this going to be?
Yeah, so part of the, the plan, and actually, there's really two connections to existing public right-of-way. So I, I don't think we would look kindly on curb cuts on Collin Park.
No, I, I, I agree. I just wanted to highlight there are places where we wouldn't do that.
Correct. There's other points of access to the, to the parcels, especially, there's two points of access to other public streets. And yeah, we would not be looking to create curb cuts on Collin Park.
Not all the time. It's reasonable to do what we have in some of our planning that we've agreed to, so, thank you.
And, and for clarification, Mark, because I, Scott, you got me confused or wondering anyway. When we're talking about 14th Street and that cul-de-sac that, that is within the boundaries of the, of the parcel, that's not actually right-of-way, that's actually still part of the private parcel? Is that 14th, is that 13th up above? The upper one that's...
Yeah, the, the upper one there, I, so I said it was part of 14th Street that may have been vacated right-of-way. So I believe it, yeah, it, it's been vacated. So that was vacated when, when like Matt talked about. All these parcels were assembled or whatever, and Collin Park Drive was put in there in that configuration. So that, that's already been done away with as, as being right-of-way. So it's actually kind of real property then that council can, can dispose of if you want to.
And is that 15th Street cul-de-sac, that's public right-of-way there? So there could be an access point there off of 15th as well?
Yes, that is a, a public street right-of-way there in 15th Street.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And, and if I can just so...
No, please.
So some of the, the visions that you saw in the South Shore Vision, Visioning Plan, we're kind of really calling for 14th Street or what you see here as, as kind of an open space, to remain open space. And that, that could be kind of public gathering spots, and that there'd be a high emphasis on connectivity for pedestrians so they could continue to walk from the larger neighborhood you see to the east there, kind of through this property if it's developed for something, and then getting out to Collin Park Drive and to the park there also, so.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we need to do a public hearing on this, get the opportunity for the public to be able to speak. Same rules apply that do with public comment. Your time is limited to five minutes and only on this particular issue. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? I will open the public comment period for that purpose. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the disposition of 345 Collin Park Drive as surplus property?
Motion to support, item 7A, is disposition of surplus property, 345 Collin Park Drive.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnsors? Any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is we have written petitions and communications in addition to allowing for the opportunity for folks to speak to us at our meetings in person. We do also have an email address, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. If you did not catch that the first time, it gives you the opportunity to address council directly. Council reviews those emails in between our regular council meetings, and we do not read them out loud at the council meetings, but we do accept them into the record. We do not have any this week, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that opportunity was available. Next item on the agenda, item 10A, adoption of ordinances. Planning Commission 10A report, West Michigan Regional Airport Authority rezoning request for 120 Regent Boulevard. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two back-to-back rezoning requests. Both have been unanimously recommended to you by staff, but more importantly, by vote by the Planning Commission. In the first, I'm going to ask Mark to come up first and talk about, oh, Steve! Steve, you were hiding behind the computer screen there, but Steve's going to talk you through this. And in this first one, we also have the applicant that is asking for this rezoning request, Aaron Thalen Wood from the airport, who may or may not want to add to this, but Steve, why don't you take us away?
All right, thank you Keith. Can you forward one screen? So what you've got in front of you is a rezoning request to go from industrial to airport. So you look at that zoning map that's on your screen there, the gray would turn to green. So that is what is in front of you. This is the piece of property that is immediately north of the airport terminal. As a matter of fact, the majority of that parking for the airport terminal is on this piece of property. This piece of property is actually owned by the airport authority. And really, the intent of that airport zoning district, that green zoning district, was for the airport itself to be zoned airport. So when we did Udo, you know, this piece of property probably should have been included in that green zoning district. From a zoning perspective, really, the big advantage of having it zoned airport is the uses that are permitted, obviously, for the airport zone aeronautical. And they don't have to go through, I guess, what I would call the normal approval process. It is the zoning administrator level review. So it's, it's sort of the most streamlined version that we have for approval process. Doesn't mean they don't have to meet all of the requirements, but they simply don't have to go to the Planning Commission. And again, because this is owned by the airport, they bought it with some federal funds. It's really restricted to aeronautical uses anyways. So the idea of it being industrial, like it could serve other purposes, doesn't really fit either. So again, recommendation is to rezone this property to airport from industrial.
Great. Questions for staff from council? I just, I've got a couple of clarifying questions, just to make sure I understand completely. Owned by the airport, immediately next to the terminal, and it's restricted to airport uses?
Yes, sir.
All right. Pretty clear. All right, thank you. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Will we approve?
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, please call the roll.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Our next rezoning request for parcel K. I didn't know that we just put letters on all of our parcels. Hopefully, there's a little more information about where it is, or, or that we have more, less than 26 parcels.
How about 355 East 64th Street?
That helps, thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, so commonly referred to as parcel K. Matt has mentioned this already, kind of a piece of property already identified by you to, as surplus property. This is property owned by the city. And this is the reverse of what we just did. So this is some green property that we would like to turn gray. So it is zoned airport, and we would like to, the recommendation is to, to rezone it to industrial. So again, just as I previously mentioned, in the, in the green, aeronautical uses are what's permitted. We want to sell this piece of property. We think it's able to be developed. And really, before we have somebody in front of you, or at least in front of maybe the Planning Commission or staff for review of a site plan, the idea was to rezone the property so that it could be ready to be developed as an industrial piece of property rather than the airport itself. I will point out, you can see on the map, it is covered by a couple of the airport overlay districts. Those are just some additional requirements or restrictions that are on properties in and around the airport. So those would, would continue to be there, that wouldn't go away. But as you can see, there's a, a large chunk of that property to the south of where those are that wouldn't be impacted by those overlays at all, certainly leaving enough property to be developed. And it doesn't mean that you can't do anything in those overlay districts. There's just some extra restrictions that come along with that. So just as the last project was, this project was recommended unanimously by the Planning Commission to be rezoned from airport to industrial.
Great, thank you. Questions from, from council for staff? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Motion to approve item 10B, Planning Commission, 355 East 64th Street, also known as parcel K.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Item 10C, proposed text amendment to the city ordinances to prohibit overnight parking in Washington Square. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I, I think Mark is taking this one, but I'll just note that this is, as it said in the report, recommended by both the Traffic Committee and the Washington School Business District. That Mark has done a great job of re-energizing and pulling that group together.
Thank you Keith. So I do have, there is a representative from the Washington Square Business Improvement District here tonight, Tammy Helen. And I don't know, Tammy, if you're going to want to say anything to, to council members in a little bit or not. But yes, the, the bid board here, the Washington Square Bid Board fully recommends this, and we went to the Traffic Committee and they're recommending it also. So what exactly are we looking at? So we'd, we'd like, we've been experiencing some issues with neighborhood residents parking there, because it is. It's, it's just open public parking, and parking in front of businesses and sometimes doing it for a long, longer time period. And, you know, we'd really like to have those parking places turnover more because it's a retail environment there, right? So it's really not meant to be kind of longer-term parking for people that live in the neighborhood. Additionally, you know, they've been experiencing some issues with, you know, maintenance of the streets, summertime, street sweeping, et cetera. If you got cars parked there all the time, it'd be nice to be able to have the cars moved. Additionally, you know, they've been experiencing some issues with, you know, maintenance of the streets, summertime, street sweeping, et cetera. If you've got cars parked there all the time, it'd be nice to be able to have the cars moved. So for maintenance reasons really, and for kind of clearing it out, so people aren't parking there longer term, we would like to have, or that's recommended that you approve this text amendment. So what are we looking at? It's, it's a small text amendment to section 18-27 of the city code, and in that section right now, there are a number of streets, there's like a half dozen or so, primarily streets that are in the downtown Holland area, where folks are not allowed to park overnight at any time of the year, okay? So really, kind of the proposal is to add the small kind of bit of Washington Square and Washington Avenue, then between 18th and 19th Street, to that list too, so people are not parking there overnight, okay? Additionally, oh, just a little bit more with this. We did send out a notice, because we just thought, okay, there might be somebody that really kind of takes offense to this, don't know. So we did send out a notice back in October, I believe, saying, hey, folks, if you've got any issues with this, please call me. I received no comments whatsoever. So just kind of taking that as, it's kind of a green light, or folks, yeah, folks don't have a problem with it. So we did also find, when I was reviewing this, just a small, little Udo kind of type text amendment that we're, that we're asking. There is a reference to the old C3 Central Business District in here, and you can probably saw that in your, in your ordinance, so we're recommending that, that C3 Central Business District reference be striked, and that you insert the, the form-based code districts for the, the central downtown district, the north downtown district, and the east downtown district. So that's all we had.
Great, thank you. Questions from counsel for staff? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to prohibiting overnight parking in Washington Square?
Move that we approve the proposed text amendment to section 18-27 of the city code, and tidy up the rest of the ordinance there.
Great. Move by Aaron Source, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Source?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Next item is item 12C1, indemnification agreement with state of Michigan. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm going to give a little context on this, and I'm going to give Matt Vindeikin an opportunity to speak, and then this is under a city attorney report. Vince is, I'm sure, prepared to describe this, but we will specifically call out here that Ron Vanderveen, kind of in some of his wrap-up role, was very key in getting this seemingly simple, two-page agreement in place that is a very important agreement, and was a little bit painful to get here in, in some ways. I'm going to speak to the importance of this. The importance of this is really needing to have this in place as, as being one of the many obstacles we've had to negotiate in order to get to the point of being so excited to really proceed with the drawing and the excitement of the ice rink, the proposal that's on screen in, in front of you all to see. This agreement with the state, the indemnification agreement, really is a restatement of something that we've had in place many years ago, but we needed to make sure that we updated, and it allows us to proceed with not only building the ice rink, but also to extend College Avenue into window on the waterfront, as we've certainly been talking with all of you and, and dreaming with the community and moving forward. So this is a, a very critical, and really can't move forward, forward without it piece, and we pretty much had everything in place, and, and we thought this was going to get taken care of, quite frankly, probably a couple of years ago, and we've been working on it, and, and we're just really pleased to be able to bring this forward to you tonight, and strongly recommend approval. And it really allows us to, just to continue to move forward with the big plans that we all have for the community in, in this space. Matt's probably going to say, well, I don't have anything else to say here, Keith, but maybe we'll let, maybe Vince, why don't you just talk about any specifics on the agreement? It's, it's relatively straightforward, but...
Yeah, thank, thank you, Keith. Yeah, the, as, as Keith indicated, this is an indemnification agreement with the state, and the reason it was needed was that there was a prior resolution by counsel back in the, I guess, late 1970s, earlier, that sort of gave assurances to the state that this site, which was formerly used as a dredge, spoil site, could be used in that manner, and the state received some assurances from the city back, back then, that the use of the site would be sort of surface, surface recreational type uses. And so while ice skating is, probably meets that definition, the, there's also an interest in putting warming structure, warming house structure, and then the street improvements, those are a little beyond what sort of was kind of in, in the plans back in the 70s, right? So we needed to get the state to not object to this sort of different type of use of property that at one point was a dredge spoil site. That, that ended in early 2000, so that's no longer there, but the spoils are still there, and the state obviously was still interested, and that's why the state wants the indemnification agreement, if we're going to do something different with the site than what we had originally had in mind. So that's a little bit of the background.
And Matt, you're the get-or-done guy. Anything else that you'd like to add, just the importance of, of this agreement?
Yeah, just a lot of thanks to Ron. I think we were calling everyone we knew, had heard of, thought somebody's uncle's dad's friend might be able to help us at the state. So this is the kind of thing that in a project like this, is just a little bit of an uncertainty that keeps some of us up at night. You know, we can do all the surveys, we can do all the site work, we can put all the plans together, but when there's something out there that's maybe out of our hands, so to speak, and in somebody else's, somebody else's picnic basket, it's really a little bit nerve-wracking to always have something like that out there. So when we, when Ron received the word that this was going to come to you as a body to indemnify the state, and to be able to proceed with the ice rink out there, I would say relief is a minor way of putting it, but it's exciting. You know, this allows us to put the pedal to the metal, and really see Frank's vision come true. So it's a good thing. It seems a little redundant, I think we maybe indemnified them 35 or 40 years ago, but they're asking that we indemnify them again, so I think that's a reasonable request to get this moving forward.
Great, thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the indemnification agreement with the state of Michigan?
Move to approve the indemnification process.
All right, move by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Source, any discussion? I just have a couple of comments to make. This is, for me, illustrative of how complicated a project like this can be, and I think sometimes we forget, and maybe the, the, the public doesn't realize, all that goes into making something like this happen, you guys do such great work, sometimes it looks like it's easy, because all of this is going on behind the scenes. It was not lost on me that it, this is, this indemnification agreement, just this small piece of this big project, has been going on for a couple of years now already in the background. And I know, in my involvement with this project, I've been pushing you guys to push this thing along, and you've been saying to me, we need to get this indemnification agreement, we need to get this indemnification agreement. Just a great example of how, in this city, we plan, plan, plan before a shovel ever hits the dirt, we make sure all of the Ts are crossed, we make sure all of the Is are dotted, so by, that by the time it gets before this body and the, and the people of the city of Holland, we've got our ducks in a row. And so I just want to thank you guys for that, I want to thank Ron for that as well, because I know he played an instrumental part in this, and you guys did really exhaust every single avenue possible to be able to get this thing across the line, and it was one of the things that was kind of holding back these next steps. And I'm as excited about this project as, as anybody is, I'm really wanting this thing to move forward quickly, and I am so pleased that we have been able to get this piece of it done, which gives us then the freedom to be able to do what we really do well here, which is to implement something like this for the people of Holland, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Source?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 12E 4.1, the financial audit for fiscal year 2022. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. So I am aware, in fact, we had an audit committee earlier today, and the audit committee, for those that are not aware, is really representatives of both the Holland Board of Public Works and city council. Thank you to the mayor and Nikki, who served in that role. And it's really an opportunity to have a little bit more in-depth conversation with our auditor, to come in and take a look at the, at the information, ask questions kind of in a different level. But one of the things that I always point out when we do this every year is the importance of it. I, I've heard it said, and I don't think it's untrue, that your role, or quite frankly, for any board that oversees any organization with finances, which by the way is most organizations, the audit process of making sure that you have controls in place, and that the financials are stated correctly and accurately, is one of the highest fiduciary responsibilities of a board. And I'm always surprised sometimes when I see organizations that maybe just don't pay the audit the appropriate attention that it deserves, or maybe just like, oh, we don't need the auditor to come present, it all looks like it worked out fine, we'll just pass it on consent agenda. As long as I'm here, I'm always going to recommend that we give this the attention that it deserves, because it is of utmost importance. Now, it's easy tonight, because I think you're about to hear some good information, but I just want to give that overview and reminder of the importance that I think this holds in the community, but absolutely a continued assurance that you get from our staff, that this is a very important process that, that we hold in high regard. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to your, our fiscal services director, Lynn McHammon, and who will also introduce in a moment, I'm sure, Paul Matz from Raymond Robson.
Thank you, Keith. Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. Yes, tonight, we're here to present the audit, and before I turn it over to Raymond Robson, Paul here will deliver the details of the audit, but I wanted to thank both the city staff and BPW staff, because it takes a lot of time to prepare all the information for the auditors, and then once the auditors come out, respond with all the information. So I'm happy to report the process went very well this year, and we actually had a little bit of extra work, because we had a new pronouncement from the Government Accounting Standards Board to implement, but we were able to get all that information. And I also want to thank the auditors, because they work with us. They had, in the prior two years, worked remotely because of COVID. This year, they were able to do more of a hybrid, so they spent the times that they needed to review some of their documents at the city, and then they were able to work remotely in some of the other days, but the process went very smoothly, and we respect working with them, because they give us a lot of guidance throughout the year. It's not just at the time of the audit, but we do check in if we have anything that's a little more unique, and we do sometimes, and we try to get the guidance before we end up at the audit time, and then there's surprises. So with that, I'm going to let Paul walk you through the 200-plus page document, and then I'm going to come back later and give you a little preview of something we worked on, that's not 200 pages. Paul, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Yes, we certainly plan to walk through each and every of the 269 pages.
Can we do each line?
Thank you, Lynn. Good evening, counsel, and in, you know, I also want to take an opportunity to thank Lynn, Michelle, and the team. It's probably no big surprise that preparing for the audit is not a particularly enjoyable process, and having us, you know, interrupt their daily responsibilities. I do think we have an excellent working relationship. You know, the city is very proactive when there are new or changes to accounting standards coming up, so as Lynn mentioned, there are no surprises during the audit. So the whole process, from our perspective, went extremely well, continue to receive, to, to appreciate the outstanding support we receive. And I do also just want to mention, you know, we did meet with the audit committee, really appreciated the conversation. The group was very engaged, asked a lot of really good questions. We don't always run into that during our presentations and, and in those types of meetings, so I just, you know, appreciate the time and attention and interest that that group has, has played as part of this process. Our goal as part of the financial statement audit is to make sure that your financial statements are accurately stated in all material respects. So certainly, we do many tests of transactions during the year, focusing on the year-end balances as well, but we also do go beyond that a little bit and look at the system of internal controls. Are there reviews taking place, segregation of duties? And if we would identify any concerns, we would have to share those as part of the audit reports with you. If you've reviewed the drafts, you have not seen anything of the sort, we did not have any findings, any internal control concerns or recommendations to make this year, hopefully that's a very positive takeaway from the audit. There are a few pages in the financial statements that I, I thought might be important to bring to your attention, the first of which is on page nine of 269. Does the group have a copy in front of them? They certainly don't need it, but, okay. So starting on page nine, it's a document referred to as the transmittal letter, and what I really appreciate about this 10 pages or so is it goes beyond the numbers a little bit. It talks about some of the accomplishments, you know, what was done, what was, was accomplished with the use of the funds during the year. There's not just page after page of numbers, but it goes beyond that a little bit. There's a section on awards and accomplishments, and so I just, I think it's an important, important section for this group to review, to just get a good high-level understanding, maybe a refresher on some of the accomplishments during the year. Starting on page 25 of that report, and going for the next couple of pages, are the independent auditor's report. This is where I mentioned our responsibility is to issue an opinion on the financial statements, and you can find that in the first couple of paragraphs on page 25. And what we have issued is the unmodified, clean audit opinion, which is the opinion you want to achieve during the audit process, that yes, we believe these are accurately stated financial statements, that's the best opinion, the highest opinion that we can give as part of the audit process. Immediately after that, on page 30, and going through to page 39, is another section that I really encourage you to review, and that's the management's discussion and analysis. This is another section that goes beyond the numbers a little bit. There's a little bit more narrative information to go along with the numbers, there's some charts and some graphs, so the information can be a little bit easier to digest. There's comparative information to June 30 of 2021 as well, so you can see maybe fluctuations and trends between years. There's discussion on budget to actual results and some of that information, and it also touches on some information looking forward as well. So again, it's just a section to get a good high-level sort of summary results of the financial results for the year, without getting necessarily bogged down into some of the details within the financial statements. There are a couple of pages, though, that I did want to refer to, I can't completely let you get away without looking at any numbers, and the first of them is on page 46 of the Page 46 is the balance sheet for governmental funds, so there's a column for the general fund and a column for the American Rescue Plan Act Fund as well. Those two are presented separately just because of their significance in terms of dollar amounts. What I wanted to mention there is that you can see for the general fund, the... that you can see for the general fund, the second line from the bottom, shows that there was an ending fund balance at the end of the year of $8,409,84,905. We'll look at how that changed during the year on the next couple of pages, but then also to mention that there is remaining about 8.5 million of the ARPA funds that have been not yet spent at the end of the fiscal year. Flipping forward a couple of pages to page 48, we have the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance, or the Income Statement for the Year. If you look right near the bottom of the page, the third line from the bottom, shows that there was an increase in fund balance through the year of $1,354,759. And I will just mention, you know, that within the general fund, there are amounts that have been set aside as part of the budget stabilization process. So if you're interested in that fund balance information broken down between budget stabilization and the general fund, the budget stabilization piece is $1,680,510, leaving about $6,720,000 for the general fund. One more number just on this, this page. So if you take the fund balance, the total fund balance, as a percentage of the current year expenses and transfers out, it's about 32.2%. Another way of thinking about that is there's about 3.9 months of expenses in the ending fund balance amount. Just a couple more pages forward from that, page 50 presents the Budget-to-Actual Statement for the General Fund. Again, just showing the original budget that was passed, the final amended budget, and then the actual results we just touched on, and then how those actual results compared to budget. You can see very near, right at the bottom of the page, that current year increase in fund balance was about $743,000 favorable compared to the final budget, primarily due to expenditures that were under budget for the year. The last item that I specifically wanted to mention is all the way back on page 106. Part of what's included in the financial statements is information on the pension plan, and I know this is of interest to a lot of governments. And what we have on page 106 is a schedule that shows the net pension liability during the year and how that changed during the year. You can see right about in the middle of the page, the ending net pension liability was $5,793,000, down pretty significantly from about $9 million at the beginning of the year. And you can note, there's a sentence right below that that talks about a breakdown of that net pension liability of $3.5 million and $2,267,000. That 2.2 million is the piece that's allocated to the Board of Public Works. So I just wanted to mention that to provide some perspective on that liability number. And the other thing I'll mention is that that is information as of December 31, 2021, because that's the MERS Plan year-end. So certainly, it'll, it'll be interesting to see how that liability might change over the next year, given the ups and downs of the markets that we've seen during 2022. There's a lot of information here. I could give you the two-hour version, but I will spare you that and just open it up to any questions that anyone might have.
Any, any questions for staff or our auditor?
I had one question. Thank you for your helpful information. Did you say there was 32 months of?
If I said that, then I misspoke.
No, no, I'm just wondering what you said. Like, I mean, I know, I think I've heard...
Sure. So what we often will compare is the ending fund balance to the total expenses for the year. It, as a percentage, it's about 32%.
Okay.
As far as months, it's about 3.9 months.
3.9 months.
Of expenses, yes.
No, sometimes my brain transforms.
Sure, a lot of numbers.
32.
Sure, a lot of numbers.
Thank you.
And as a follow-up on that, Lynn, maybe you could too, because we talked about this at the Audit Committee, how that fits within the policy that we have related for, related to fund balance?
Yeah, I was just going to try to come up here and say that because I like to talk about when we can. So you may recall, earlier this year, we actually formalized the fund balance policy, and we talked about deciding what the right measure was, and ultimately we came, so when he's talking about 32%, it's the combined general fund and combined with the budget stabilization, and we had put the target to be 25 to 35%. So we are right in the range, very good sweet spot there, so.
Other questions? You guys did a great job. Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, Lynn, please. I don't want to cut you off.
Not finished.
Yep.
So, now, I really, all honesty, like reading the whole 269 pages, but we know that not everybody does. So you might recall, last year, we had introduced the first Popular Annual Financial Report. And just like the budget in brief, what it is intended to do is take some of these large reports that we, that we produce in finance, and a lot of times those reports have regulations, like we have to include all those schedules in those 269 pages for various reasons. So, but, these condensed versions or mini versions are intended to provide the information in a more user-friendly so that we can truly let all of our citizens who don't necessarily have the time or desire to read the large reports, at least get an idea of what we, what city finances look like. And so we are happy to report, we did receive an award for the first one that we did last year, and now we've produced our second one, and we get a little more flexibility in this report, too. So we include the numbers, but then we also have a little more leeway because we can put more of our, we kind of like have some information on strategic initiatives, some of the projects that we're doing, and even our look to the future, and we have some charts and graphs. So I'm going to leave you with our copy. We just kind of wrapped it up because we needed to get the information from the full audit to do this. And then we will have both of these wrapped up officially and online for everybody to access. And I encourage everyone to take a look because it is interesting to see how your dollars at work, what they're doing, and this is a way to do just that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for us on either of those.
I don't have any questions, but I sat in on Councilman Quincy Byrd's place today, and have to say, I actually enjoyed it. You both are very clear in what you do and what, how you relate to people and how you relayed the information. I can't say as to the numbers, I'm trusting that they're accurate, but the gist of it and the overall information, and we do very well as a city, and you two do very well as individuals, very competent, clear. I can't say enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Great. Thank you both very much. Appreciate it. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the financial audit for fiscal year 2022? Moved by Corbin?
Approve.
Is there support?
Second, second, support.
Support by Aaron Sors. Any discussion? I kind of saved my comments for, for this part because I too sat in on the, on the Audit Committee meeting today, and I echo exactly what you're, you're saying, Nikki, with that. I like to think of myself as a words guy rather than a numbers guy, but I recognize how incredibly important this is. And you're right, Nikki, we, we don't have the capacity or probably the understanding to be able to double-check every transaction that, that takes place. We rely on staff. We rely on the auditors to do that. We rely on these kind of reports to give us the assurance that we need to be able to assure the public that the finances here are handled really well. And this is, there was discussion in the Audit Committee, this is the, we've 30 years in a row, 30 years in a row, we've won awards for our, our financial management, that we do it right here, and I don't want us to become complacent in that. You know, we've just kind of come to expect it. That's more than half my life that we've been, we've been award-winning financial managers here in the City of Holland, and it was really heartening for me to hear comments between both our finance staff and our auditor, you know, that we're working together. This is a year-round process that we're working to, we're anticipating issues, and we're trying to be proactive in a constantly changing environment with changing rules every year. You know, I heard a comment at the, at the Audit Committee meeting today that it would be hard enough to do this if the rules were the same every single year, but the rules are not the same every single year. And I heard about more Gatsby changes this afternoon than I could wrap my head around and even try to figure out what some of them might mean and how they might impact us. And I know that our staff is working diligently with the auditor to understand those, how those impact us, and make sure that we're doing that correctly. I want to assure the public that, you know, based on being part of that Audit Committee, part of this process, reviewing this paperwork, our finances are not just accurate and error-free, and we're not just getting the highest report that we can possibly get from our auditors, but, that the process is transparent and accessible, and we're working hard to make it transparent. You know, I know I'm not excited about reviewing 269 pages of audit reports, and I know that most of the public's not interested in that either, which is why we're doing the Popular Annual Financial Report. We're trying to make this accessible, whether it's that, whether the public just wants that amount of information, or that's an introduction to them, to the rest of the information. And I know that the Finance Department doesn't put out this little card that I carry in my wallet every day about the finances in the City of Holland and facts, but I'm telling you, the number of times that I pulled this out over the course of the year and said, you want to know what's going on in the City of Holland? You want to see some numbers? I've got it in my wallet, and we've got these so that the people of Holland can understand that as well. I can't thank staff enough for taking this seriously. I can't thank the auditor enough for working with us and making sure we do this right. And I really think it's important, and I know that this council understands, that this is our primary responsibility to the people of the City of Holland, to make sure that their tax dollars, it's their money that we are, we are using and spending on their behalf every day, that we're doing that as best as we possibly can. And this is just an example of the fact that we are doing exactly that. So thank you. We appreciate that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Item 12E 6.1, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The City Manager's Office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation, Sal Perez Youth Scholarship Fund, cash receipts, reporting dates, October 31 through 11/27/22, $44. Public Safety Services, Police Operations, Sean and Sheri Holst, $990. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Moved to approve said gifts with a token of our appreciation.
Moved by Coronado. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 13, communications from the City Manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you. Just two things tonight. One, just encouragement and a reminder for everyone that there's lots of wonderful events going on in the larger community, but many of them sponsored by the city or city partners. The, at Windmill Island Gardens...
Magic at the Mill?
The Magic at the Mill has been really getting rave reviews. I don't know if everyone's been out there yet or anyone's been out there yet, but that's been great. The Parade of Lights, thank you for all of your enthusiasm leading off the parade last week. Great to see people out there. The Kurtzmark is off and running, just a lot of great things going on, so encouragement there. And then the only other thing is, it was on consent agenda this evening, and you probably saw, among many of our staff out there, we also had our relatively new Grants Manager, Connie Locker here, and just doing a great job. And just to let you know, I asked her this evening, I said, so the grant that, that you approved that we applied for tonight, I said, kind of, where are we at with the number of grants that you've helped us apply for yet? And I think we're approaching or just over $4 million worth of grants that we've applied for. Now, the turnaround time there takes a long time, so like, she has the number, but it's not like we've secured that amount of grants. But I just confirmed with her that one of the things that she's been tracking from day one is, what has she, what has she helped us apply for and what have we secured? And we're not going to bat 100% on getting everything that we apply for. Quite frankly, if we do, you should have a talking with myself and with Lynn and with her because then we're not swinging hard enough at going at some stuff that we're not going to get. But one of the things that we're going to do is every time that we apply for a grant, we'll just have a little scorecard that goes along with it that says, where exactly are we at in process of, you know, over a period of time, how much have we applied for and how much we've gotten? Because I think that's a really good thing to keep track of. I know we've been encouraged to do that. I totally agree. It justifies that position, but I think more importantly, it just justifies the community that we're always taking advantage of anything that comes across our way that, that we're going to try to go after. Really speaks to the conversation we just had on our finances. And that's all I have tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. I do want to echo some of the things that Mr. Van Beek said. This has been a wonderful holiday season. We, we had a little bit of snow there, but we've been blessed with a whole lot of great weather that's given people the opportunity to be able to do things. I know I had a ball at the Parade of Lights, and it was great to have council out there enjoying the crowds as well. I have not made it to Magic on the Mill, at the Mill yet. I was kind of hoping that there would be some snow, but I'm going to have, and maybe I'd be able to get there, out there and see it in the snow, but I'm not sure that's going to happen. But I encourage folks to get out there. And I want to thank everybody. I was mentioning to my wife, I think there are more Christmas lights out there that the folks have put out than I've seen in a lot of years, and that's just, that's just a wonderful thing. It doesn't have anything to do with city government, but it's certainly wonderful that the people of Holland are stepping up and, and in the holiday spirit as well. I do have one recommendation for an appointment. I'm recommending to City Council that you approve the appointment of David Couch to the Holland Board of Public Works as an ex-officio member. What does that mean? Well, we, most of the members of the Board of Directors for the Holland Board of Public Works are residents of the City of Holland because most of the, the service area for the Board of Public Works is the City of Holland, but the Board of Public Works does serve areas in, outside of the city, in the area townships. And so there is an ex-officio member of the Board of Directors that represents those townships to be able to provide a voice and ears for the townships and what's going on on that board, and that's what this seat is. This is that township representative. So I'm asking that David Couch be appointed to the Holland Board of Public Works as an ex-officio member with a term to expire on June 30, 2025.
Support.
Moved by Corbin. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll on this one for me?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. And that is all that I have this evening. Next item is appointments, motions, and communications from council members, and it's my understanding, Mr. Corbin, that you have an appointment to make.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Please accept the reappointment of Veronica Salazar to the Team Court Advisory Board, also known as the TCA, for her third term, said full-term expiring December 6, 2024. Also, please accept the resignation of Mark Easter from the Team Court Advisory Board, also known as the TCA. Board Member Easter recently retired from the Calvary Schools of Holland, therefore he is no longer eligible to serve as the Calvary liaison, and that would be effective immediately.
All right. And what is the pleasure of council in regard to that recommendation?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other appointments, motions, communications from council members this evening? Seeing none. We do not have any first readings of ordinances. There is just one motion that I would entertain at this time.
Move to adjourn?
Moved by Aaron Sors. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate it.